Okay, this is Sarah Wolf calling to order the Manchester Essex Regional School Committee Meeting on August 18th, that's 6:15. We are going to start, as we always do, with public comment. If you have a public comment, please put your name in the chat. I know we're expecting a few tonight. Already in the chat, I put in because we have a group tonight here for students
I'm trying to put your headphones on.
Against racism, and we're looking forward to hearing from them. So who is here from the student group to speak tonight?
Hi, that's me, Nina Williams.
Hey Nina, welcome. Nice to see you.
Nice to see you.
Go ahead.
Okay, I'll just go ahead. Hi, everyone, I'm Nina Williams. I graduated from MRHS in 2018. I now attend Georgetown. I recently started the Student Coalition Against Racism, also known as SCAR, with Abby Fitzgibbon, also my year. SCAR is composed of 25 current students and alumni of MRSD. It spans 10 graduation years. Following the national unrest and in response to the grave injustices that preceded racial color, we decided it was long overdue to take a critical look at the ways in which the MRSD community is succeeding or failing to educate students around racism. With interest representing the opinions of the broader school committee, we received personal testimonials, suggestions, and feedback from 239 individuals through an online survey. This survey was disseminated to any and all MRSD community members who are willing to take part of it through our Instagram Facebook pages, as well as sharing it to thousands of members of the Essex and Manchester community Facebook groups. I say this to demonstrate our commitment to providing data that is representative of our community at large, and the community has voice or desire for change within MRSD. With the alarming data results, we wrote an official letter, "Suggestions" to the MRSD Administration and School Committee. This letter identifies aspects of the current culture that pose a threat to growth and learning and perpetuate harmful attitudes and actions surrounding race. The identified five key priorities of concern were curriculum, school culture, discipline, and the School Resource Officer, and the diversity of our faculty and administration. We then developed suggestions for realistic steps that could be undertaken in the short and long term to address these concerns. Of course, with only a few minutes, I can't adequately summarize these concerns and suggestions we created. I do hope to send everyone a copy of the letter in its entirety after this meeting, along with supporting documents such as a thorough report of the survey data results. Really quickly, I'd just like to read some of the survey statistics that we found really alarming, just a good idea. Seventy-three percent of current and former students disagreed with the statement that MRSD does a good job teaching about historical and current racism and discrimination. Sixty-two percent of former and current students agreed with the statement that racist or intolerant comments were common in the school. Only 13% of current and former students believe that MRSD takes racism seriously and properly disciplines students for instances of racism and intolerance. Overall, 70% of current and former students disagreed with the statement that the presence of the School Resource Officer was beneficial. And overwhelmingly, 91% of respondents agreed that MRSD should work to hire more people of color in teaching positions. Thank you for your time, and I hope we can have a more in-depth conversation about these concerns and our suggestions at a later time. Thank you.
Nina, thank you for your work on SCAR, and thank you for coming to our meeting. We are going to be addressing some of the SCAR issues later in the meeting, but right now it's public comment time, so thank you for sharing. I just want to remind everybody else that the public comment is limited to three minutes per person on one subject, and we'll keep it going for about 20 minutes, and we will move along. So let me see. Yeah, why don't we go ahead and let Tamara start? She wants to present her, sorry, that's a tongue twister, present the petition that circulated over the weekend. So Tamara, go ahead and start.
Hi. So just, so I emailed everyone the petition. So I'm addressing all of you today as a concerned Manchester parent and as a community physician. On behalf of many parents of the Manchester and Essex communities, we are specifically requesting that MRSD School Committee consider a revote on the plans for the start of the fall year, for fall 2020. Since you are elected officials, it's only fitting that you hear feedback from the parents you represent. Please remember, we are trying to advocate for our children, and your current school committee decision, fully remote, only provides parents the option of opting out of in-person learning. We are requesting that you, the voting school committee members, consider giving the parents the option to opt in. We would like to see grades K through 3 start on September 16, 2020, in person, with a hybrid model option offered, following the guidelines put forth by CDC, DESI, and with the six-foot social distancing measures you previously booked on, or at the very least offer proof to parents that the school committee is actively working towards that goal by providing us with timelines and metrics. Parents can track in the weeks to come. And I added in the comments how parents could potentially help if you're willing to let us help, because we want to be part of the solution as well. Here's reasons why I truly believe this can be done safely. I think we all kind of talked about the metrics that it were safe. A, our parents want to have our kids back in school. I have a five-year-old and a seven-year-old. I don't see them being successful on full-day remote learning. I think that you're turning the parents into corrections officers or police officers to police our kids to get back on their computers at those young ages. So that's one component. There's, from a safety perspective, there's data that says children under age 10 are considered less likely to carry and transmit the COVID-19 virus. So our community rates are super low, can't really get much better, being that our mass.gov percent positivity was 1.4% again today. Children's age grades K through 3 ones that will most benefit from an in-person learning. This time of year is crucial to start the year off right. We will have the most options for outdoor learning, for open windows, for fans, for circulating air. It's going to be a bridge for these children if and when they need to move to fully remote. If our percent positivity goes up in the state or county, or in the days their particular classroom may need to be shut down temporarily in case of a COVID-positive contact and contact tracing needs. Lastly, this is the perfect age group to start with, given the ability to cohort and the curriculum needs at these levels. As these things go well with this age group, we can use the information and experiences to safely extend more in-person learning opportunities to other grades moving forward. Please remember, all parents who express opinions and needs in other forums are trying to advocate for our children. Please reconsider a vote and let parents opt in for in-person learning for grades K through 3, if they think that's what's best for their child. And please remember that all parents would love to be part of the solution if you would.
Okay, thank you, Tamara. Yeah, Ferris has a letter from the Board of Health that he would like to read.
So, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, you want me to read the letter, or do you want me to just comment on the letter? I really, the letter is not intended to fingerpoint or lay blame. The letter is really just trying to use the data that's existing to argue that kids K through 5, I think, are better served right now in school, to some degree, not necessarily Monday through Friday, but to some degree. And it also is to highlight that they do have a lower transmission rate.
Ferris, can I interrupt you for a second? I think it's, I think we need you to actually read the letter into the meeting for the record.
Sure, I'm happy to read it.
Thank you.
So this is from the Board of Health in Essex, addressed to the Manchester Essex School Committee. So the Essex Board of Health has significant concerns regarding MRSD's decision to provide online-only learning this upcoming school year, particularly related to those students in elementary school. There have been several prominent medical organizations, such as the American Academy of Pediatrics, which advocate for in-school learning when the incidence of the community allows. The current incidence in Massachusetts has dropped considerably over the past several months. The positive test rate has remained under 2% for at least the last two weeks, as indicated by the mass.gov dashboard. Furthermore, our communities have failed to report any cases of COVID-19 in the past two weeks. The surrounding communities also have had very low number of cases over the past few weeks. The Board of Health has significant concerns about the potential long-term impact this may have on children academically, socially, and emotionally. There are many other concerns, including educational, racial disparities, child hunger, child abuse. We are already seeing a high rate of discussion on social media, with parents trying to coordinate study cohorts and play dates since the school committee decided on an all-remote curriculum. As you know, these will be unsupported by any municipal or government agency, and will cause significant difficulties in contact tracing, and should there be an outbreak. The Board of Health is concerned that the school district is not using scientifically established benchmarks to plan a safe return to in-school learning. This means we do not have a possible in-school return date for the foreseeable future. Most states, including New York, which was a COVID hotbed, are using a less than 5% positive test rate as a benchmark for a safe in-school return goal. With the likelihood that the COVID-19 pandemic will come to a true end many years off, if ever, we believe that the district needs to be particularly evidence-based when deciding on in-school versus remote learning. The Essex Board of Health would also argue that the transmission rate in children under the age of 10 is lower than adults. There is a growing body of evidence which shows that younger students are less likely to become ill or spread the disease. This has allowed other countries to initiate and prioritize reopening of schools to those in K through 5. We ask you consider to review the back-to-school plans of Denmark and Norway as a guide to successful in-school reopening. Both countries reported no increase in disease burden in children after on-campus schools opened. The time to reopen school learning for these youngsters is now, when supported by epidemiological data. Unfortunately, history of previous pandemics tells us that COVID-19 will not simply go away when a vaccine is developed. Children at these ages cannot afford to lose out.
Can I ask you, can I ask you to wrap it up? Thank you, because we're trying to give everybody three minutes.
I'm just reading the letter. So, cannot afford to lose out on years of in-school learning. We appreciate the time and efforts of the school committee and are here to help. If the school committee has any questions about testing, transmission, or PPE, please feel free to reach out. We are all in this together. That was signed by David Driscoll, myself, and Alison Roderick.
Ferris, thank you for taking the time to attend the meeting and to read in the letter. I believe Kate Cox Sunquist has a comment.
I do, thanks, Sarah. I'm here tonight because I've heard a lot of criticism of the Mersey School Committee's recent decision to open schools in a remote capacity, but I think it's important to hear a variety of perspectives, so I wanted to offer my own in contrast to some of that criticism. Just to provide some context for my comments, I'm the mom of a first and third grader at Essex Elementary. I've been a classroom teacher in other local districts. I hold a master's in elementary education, and I've developed curriculum professionally at the national level, so I do feel qualified to speak to this issue from an educational standpoint. I want to also give some background on our experiences learning remotely in my homeless spring. I think that people sometimes believe that only parents with successful remote learning experiences support the decision to stay remote. I have one child who did fine with remote learning. He missed his friends, he missed his teacher, but he was able to complete most of his assignments independently, and he made solid academic progress. My other child struggles academically. He's on a 504 plan at school, and during the course of remote learning, he regressed significantly, both academically and emotionally. For him, remote learning was a catastrophe, but it would be, so it would be untrue to say that remote learning in our house was a resounding success. So when the district distributed the survey about back-to-school plans, I eagerly checked off the hybrid option for each of my children. I want my kids back in school, and they want to do that, too. Unfortunately, as soon as I learned the reality of attending school in person right now, I realized it's far from an effective educational model. I don't dispute the science behind school reopenings. I do believe that there are safe ways to physically get, oh geez, to physically get our kids back into the buildings, but I also believe that the cautionary guidelines that dictate those measures of safety preclude effective instruction at all levels. So we should be asking ourselves if the goal of education is simply to get kids into a building, or if it is to deliver effective instruction. So once I saw the plans for hybrid education, looked at the diagrams of classrooms, and came to understand the exponential burden that would be placed on our teachers, who would be tasked with delivering five days of instruction to two separate groups of children in two separate mediums each week, I realized how completely impractical this model was. It would require six-year-olds to stay seated at a desk for hours at a time. It would require teachers to provide feedback on worksheets that they can't even read from six feet away. It would require cutting bus capacity by two-thirds, and it would cost our district $1.6 million to implement with zero guarantee that it will remain feasible. Educationally speaking, building a more robust remote learning experience will allow our educators to more effectively deliver instruction, differentiate material, and provide consistent feedback to our students within our financial means. I am excited to see how our remote learning experience this fall will be different from our remote learning experience last spring. I would like to remind everyone that this decision is not one made based solely on health. Schools are here to do more than keep our children safe, they are here to educate our children. I support the Mersey School Committee's decision to open in a remote capacity with plans to phase in in-person instruction as possible, and I applaud the committee for making a decision that is based not only on what is safe for our children, but also on what is best for our kids from an educational perspective, as is the charge of a school committee. Thanks, Sarah.
Thank you, Kate. I do not see any more comments in the chat. Is anybody else hoping to make a public comment? Okay, so hearing from nobody else, I'm going to ask our administrators to go ahead and turn off the chat for the duration of the meeting, because we all find that it's very distracting, and we definitely want to focus on our presenters. Oh, and I'm the first presenter, so, well done, because I have to open my report here so that I can read it with my 50-year-old eyes. All right. So I would like to go ahead and begin with my chairman's report. Welcome to everyone who's joining us tonight. I didn't check to see how many people were on the call, but I know there are a lot of you. Thank you to 1623 Studios for recording the meeting and posting it for us. Thank you to those who shared during public comment just now, and to everyone who participated in the district's town hall question-and-answer session just prior to this meeting. It has been a busy week. After our vote last week to enter school in a remote model, people have raised questions and concerns. First, many people were confused about the survey that had gone out earlier in the summer. The survey results let us know that you really wanted to get your kids back to school, so we directed our administrators to evaluate the hybrid model thoroughly and present us with their reports. We heard these reports in public meetings on August 4th and August 11th. As a committee, we found flaws with the hybrid model. In addition to the health and safety of students and staff, we are concerned about staffing challenges, the diminished quality of the educational program, the social-emotional toll on children, and the financial implications to the district. Therefore, when Annie moved to recommend that the district start in an all-remote model, and after discussion, we voted unanimously to do so. I received emails this morning asking us to take a revote, and we also received the petition that Tamara just read in public comment that was circulated online. So at this time, I would like to ask if there are any school committee members who are interested in making a motion to revisit the vote. Okay, so I'm not hearing that anybody is interested in making that motion at this time. Okay, so of course, I don't want you to take that the wrong way. We all want to get the children back to school. A revote wouldn't actually, even if we revoked it to try to go back hybrid right now, I don't think we would have the capability to get the kids back to school right now. So given the circumstances created by the virus, the restrictive guidelines, the concerns about our ability to staff the program in person, and the financial constraints, I think that is why we voted unanimously last week to return to school in a remote model. This, yes?
Oh, this is Ken. I just wanted to speak, I am not speaking in favor of a revote. I also just wanted to emphasize especially the importance on, we talk about safety, and I just want to emphasize again, I think that's a critical point, because we have responsibility why, why I personally picked to support the remote model. I do not feel we should revisit the question. If anything, in my own workplace in the North Shore, which is kind of more contained than the schools, people in tighter cohorts, we're seeing higher numbers of cases. We're having issues when people come into work. I really think it's our approach of starting, starting small. We've fought big, and I feel that starting with remote, we've got a good scalable model, and we can scale it safely. So I didn't want you to just be there and people hearing the silence, because there's been a tremendous amount of good feedback on both sides of the issue, as you've said, but I haven't heard anything new that's really changed or altered the decision since last week, at least in my mind. So I just wanted to go on record with that.
Okay, thank you, Ken.
Thank you. All right.
That's okay, that's great, thank you. Our vote to start the school committee in a remote model has allowed the administrators and teachers to plan for a very robust remote program. They are working hard to find ways to bring the students to school to meet their teachers, pick up supplies, and develop relationships at the beginning of the year. We are also hopeful that we will be able to provide our high-need students with the special care and attention that they need, and that they will prioritize a move to the hybrid model for our youngest students when conditions allow. In addition, we are hoping to work with our community partners to find childcare solutions for families who need support. This was the focus of Wednesday's advisory group meeting. Now that we have defined our path forward, I hope that we can work together in the Manchester Essex communities for a successful start to the 2020 school year. So changing, changing lanes a little bit, I just want to move right into this. Tonight, we heard in public comment from a representative of the Student Coalition Against Racism, so thank you, Nina, for your comments. So just before we move on with the rest of the meeting, I know Pam has a lot to talk about, but I would like to just take a moment to establish a working group that will continue to address the issues that the SCAR group has raised. So Pam, can you help us figure out how did we do that?
Sure, sorry, I'm having some battery issues over.
Uh-oh.
Okay, all set. I think you've got a couple of options. You have a couple of standing subcommittees that you could task with taking on the coordination of this effort, or you could establish something completely different. I know we all already have an internal group that's working, so it could be simply tasking one of the subcommittees to coordinate with the internal group and form a broader coalition that invites SCAR to join the table.
I think it would really make sense to do that with the Policy Subcommittee.
Okay.
And join together with your working group, and then with SCAR. So we will, we don't have to set up the dates right now, but let's get that up and running as soon as we can, because I know these kids have worked hard, and they have some, some great ideas to share.
That sounds good.
Okay, so that's it for my chairman's.
Annie is waving her hand.
Annie is waving her hand.
Yeah. So in terms of the work that's being done internally, I'm wondering if we can have some sort of a report from that committee that, or that group that tells us kind of what's the plan and, and what's the study? And I know that we've got a lot of stuff going on, but if we could just kind of get a sense of what is the internal group doing in terms of content, pedagogy, all those elements that go into the kind of equity and diversity questions?
So I'm going to ask for a little time. Yeah. They've been, I would say, on a self-study and looking at the curriculum over the summer, but with everything that needs to be done and the training that they need to undergo in the next two, a week out, two weeks straight to open up the year, I don't know if we're going to be totally prepared on that for some time, other than what Julie reported a little bit earlier this summer.
Right, so maybe like October, late October, maybe November?
Yeah, even maybe end of September, in terms of kind of what the thinking is for next steps.
Yeah, because I think there are some great points that the, the SCAR group pointed out, but I think what I didn't see there was pedagogy, and that there are some really good studies out there about, you know, where we could be, where there could be bias that we are just not aware of.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. Again, not making it any lesser priority than it is, but just acknowledging that there's a monumental lift over the next two weeks.
Yeah, I get, I'm sorry, and I'm not trying to dump on you, it's just, you know, just what I want to see.
Yeah, I think we're just really excited to get this up and going, so thanks, Annie, and thanks Pam, and thanks Nina. And I don't believe there's a student report tonight.
Nope, we should be back on track when school's back in session.
Okay, great. So then the consent agenda just has the minutes from the last two meetings, and those did actually go out to the school committee this time. And I believe there were already some changes made. So does anybody want to make a motion to approve the minutes from August 4th and August 11th?
I only saw August 4th. Am I?
Oh, I think you're right, actually.
I agree.
You are, you are right. I was going to throw that correction up, that you have the minutes of August 4th. August 11th, Gail did complete them, I just didn't get them to you yesterday. And you did, you did have a series of vouchers, which I don't think is problematic if we add it to the agenda, because it's, it's typical business.
Okay, I have that open. So a motion to approve minutes from 8:04, right? And then Abby, do you have the warrant numbers?
Yeah, they're all wrapped into the consent agenda, but it is warrant number 1078, 1079, and 1006.
Annie?
I made the motion.
Oh, I'll second it, Shannon.
All right, we need to do a roll call for all the votes when we're online, so go ahead, Eric?
Burke, yes.
Matt?
Matt, yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Ken?
Warnock, yes.
Yes, and I may guess to approve the consent agenda and then with the vouchers and the, thank you, everybody. And then we are moving on to the subcommittee reports, and it looks like there's a report from the Policy Committee, is that right?
So we actually haven't met again since, so we don't have a report this week.
Okay, no problem, it's been quite busy.
Sarah, the Facilities Committee, the School Building Committee met last Thursday. Good news, we, the Classroom Wing for Memorial is complete, and it is ready to go, and there is a punch list that they were rapidly working, working down. I think it was less than 100 last Thursday. I hope it's significantly less today. So that's good news, and I just want to make sure that we thank the team that got it done, because there was no delay, we are on budget, and we were able to catch up on the COVID delays that we had, and so time adds, delay adds money, and it's really great that we've had such a great team in Dorn Whittier, JCJ, and WT Rich. So many thanks to them for just getting it done.
Thank you all, yes, the whole Building Committee and everybody who worked on that project, it's been totally amazing, you guys have knocked it out of the park.
Here, here. And a special thank you to our former member Caroline Weld. She did, she and Annie did all the heavy lifting on this, so she should get the credit, even though she's not nominally, you know, mentioned here, so thank you, guys.
Yes, she's listening.
She is listening. She's always listening.
Does any other, so does the Finance Committee have a report tonight?
We don't have a report. We are circling on a collaboration meeting, and as you know, those meetings take place with members of Boards of Selectment of both towns, members of the Finance Committees of both towns, and both town administrators and members of the School Committee, the Finance Subcommittee. We are circling on a day and time. I think we're looking at either tomorrow or Wednesday. Pam, did we, did we lock in on either of those?
I think the, it was Thursday morning that we landed on with everybody being able to attend, so we'll get that confirmation out to everyone.
Okay, perfect, so then we'll have an update for you next time.
Great. Ken and I are on the negotiations team. We haven't started formal negotiations, but I would like to say that our MITA team has been working with us on our advisory board all along and all through the process. We're really lucky to have such great teachers to work with, and we, we are looking forward to starting negotiations really soon. All right, on to you, Pam.
Okay, so I'm debating, as I'm looking at the list of participants, how many people between my morning meeting with faculty and my pre-meeting with parents have already heard a good piece of this? So I'm going to try to be brief, and I'll try to hit the highlights, and if the School Committee feel like I'm missing something, just push me with some questions. So tonight, we're going to give you a planning update that includes a few things, an overview of remote learning as presented, as has been presented in the plan, and this is really the 30,000-foot view, will be certainly putting out more communications from the school-based level that addresses a lot of, I think I see the questions coming in from parents. It's a lot about getting kids ready for school, preparations, when they can get materials, and those are, that level of question and answer is going to can get materials. And those are, that level of question and answer is going to start to come out from the school level as soon as we start to lock down a few details and finish our work, the negotiation work with the teachers. So tonight, what I want to do to start off is kind of the, the pedagogical background of the remote learning plan. So I'm going to ask Julie to start off with, with that. It may be a repeat for some. She had gone over this with us a couple of meetings ago, but I know different people are tuning in now at this level. Then I'll give you the nuts and bolts of the remote plan, and we can give you an update on the HVAC systems, which is an ongoing conversation at the school level and concerns being raised by teachers that, to ensure that our air quality is sufficient to manage, to maintain a safe environment. And I think Allison just wants to give us an update on some of the special education planning and maybe clarify where we're at and how we're prioritizing bringing students in. So if you'll give us a little time, we'll go through that and then take your questions. So Julie, if you'd be so kind to just give us that big picture, what are we trying to achieve? And I think this answers Annie's question from session one, which it, or was it Teresa's question at the end? I'm sorry, Teresa, kind of what's the big picture difference of how we're planning as we go into the fall to provide remote learning in a different way than we did in the spring?
Sure. Thank you for posting that because I was just wondering if you needed me to post mine. So I appreciate that. So what we've been working on since March 2020, when we first went out, was trying to create a definition around remote learning. And as to John's point earlier in the conversation that we had with the town hall for parents, you know, this is something that we had never had to really think about or do before. So we were thrust into this situation and building the plane while we were flying it. And so I, so what, as we're preparing for the fall, what we've taken is what we've learned from the spring and all the feedback that we received from parents and teachers around some of the challenges that we were all kind of facing as we got into, into the remote, remote learning model. And we tried to really synthesize a lot of that and do a lot of research around what does good online instruction look like to prepare for some potential eventuality of going fully remote again in the future. So obviously, we didn't have a sense during the spring what the fall would look like. So we decided that we were going to double down and make a decision to delve really deeply into researching an online model that we felt we could provide to schools should we need to get into this type of situ, should we get into this type of situation again. And so what we did is we pulled a lot of resources. We were looking at colleges too, just to put it out there, so that we could get a sense of where our high schoolers would be going, but also to learn some of the pedagogical practices that online colleges were offering to students and have been for years. So we pulled research from that to learn about the hybrid model, online instruction, what it looked like in a variety of formats for different grade levels, and then tried to really think about how we would apply that learning to the elementary grade levels and to really create the system that we would feel really comfortable maneuvering in as we prepared for this type of eventuality. So what you're seeing on the screen right now are three resources, five really, that we really read and dug into and pulled from to help us understand and conceptualize the model that we are planning right now for remote learning. And so what we've called it is the MRSD High Flex Model. And what it allows us to do is to offer and think about offering instruction in a remote or a fully hybrid model. And obviously, we didn't know what the plan would be, so we needed it to function in both capacities. So we took online courses through the Modern Classrooms Project over the spring and into the summer. We took, reviewed tons of webinars and articles around blending content and what the delivery for online content could look like. We have done tons of research on Zoom and really learned about the different capacities that Zoom is offering. And obviously, Zoom upgrades itself, you know, consistently. So we're working with the most current version of Zoom and really thinking about how we can use Zoom to help us really reach out and connect with students on a daily basis. And then we took all the research, I'm sorry, all the feedback and really thought about what would online instruction look like for K to five, K to two, three to five, six to eight, and nine to 12, and what are the different capacities that we would need to focus on for each, you know, developmental, developmental component of, you know, for student learning. So this is really, like Pam said, a 30,000-foot view, but what we've been trying to do, and I feel like we're really successful in now answering these questions, what is the need around creating impactful lessons? So how do we use a learning management system to allow us to connect with students around a lot of instructional strategy that, that is real time and working with students on a daily basis throughout a regular school day schedule? So how do we address whole group instruction? How do we address small group instruction? How do we address individual student needs within the scope of these lessons? How do we engage parents? How do we support with SEL? These are all the conversations. We have them all day, every day, literally, and have been since March. And we feel really good about where we are now with the questions that we started with in early March. How do we communicate with students? How can we make sure that we're really communicating with students fully and families, and we're offering support to students who need it, not just academically, but socially and emotionally? How do we do that through some of the technologies we have available to us through Zoom, Google Hangout, creating classroom structures for collaboration and communication? We've learned a lot from some of these technological resources that you see on the right-hand side of the screen. Another driving force and question for us was how do we build classroom community and collaboration and offer useful feedback to students on student work? And this, you know, goes back to when we first went fully remote, we were following the state's guidelines around the instructional practice that the state wanted us to follow through with, which was not, not instructing on new material. And that really hand-tied our teachers because our teachers are doers, and they wanted to, you know, continue with teaching. And so we had about a three-week to four-week holding pattern, which was a real challenge for teachers and for students. And so when we finally got more into the learning how the technology could work, or how we could work the technology to work with students, we were already halfway through the whole remote learning process. So we've taken what we learned from that, built a better model, and we're applying new knowledge to that as well. And then we're taking a look at how, what kind of technology supports the work that we do with kids every day? So what kind of technology helps us deliver science instruction? What kind of technology helps us deliver math? And so we're really looking at aligning instructional practice with specific technologies that help us do the things that we need to do. And we're training all of our teachers on that as well. And then how do we offer support for students? So how do we engage with families and kids? How do we bring kids in so they can meet with their teachers? What are all, all the work that we're doing with Yale? How can they help us build supportive structures for students through the work that we're doing with them, but also coming to help us develop practices that we can help bridge the gap between school and home through this whole remote piece? And so I feel like there are so many moving parts. I could really go on and on for a long, long time. But I want to explain, you know, kind of what we're working with so that we can answer some of the questions and probably concerns that, that people may have had, you know, judging where we were in the spring versus where we're going to be in the fall. So over the summer, our teachers have been taking online classes, attending tons of online webinars around different technologies. We have been looking at building the internal structure for the content delivery through CSAT and Google Classroom. We have tons of collaborative groups working and meeting every single day. I don't really think our teachers had a summer, to be honest with you, because I feel like I see them every day in the different meetings that we're having. So I can assure you that there is a ton of work that's happening, and just tons of thought being put into the work around delivering instruction really effectively in the fall. So the last course that we took was a really great course on the seven best virtual learning strategies to deepen student engagement. So we have teacher teams that we've developed as well across the district who will be helping to deliver a lot of this training to each particular school so that we're able to get in, into delve in really deeply at each particular grade level. So that's a 30,000-foot view. And I know what you're looking at on the screen right now kind of breaks out where we were in the spring to where we went to the summer and how we're organizing our teaching and learning and all of the trainings that we are setting up for teachers in the fall. Oh, in addition to that, we are rebuilding our teacher websites so that we have live, I can't say live tutorials, because they'll be recorded, recorded tutorials for, for staff to go back and look at and use any time over the course of the instruction, the time that we're remote. We're also building a parent website and a parent IT support system so that we'll be able to offer tutorials to parents on the different technologies that I'm talking about, so people don't feel like they're in the dark trying to, you know, juggle a lot of different things. So we're making it really user-friendly. And we're also going to be offering an IT support call-in line for families so that we're able to, you know, really address people's needs in the moment. So there are a lot of moving parts to this, and we are pulling them all together. So, sorry for the, the fast talking, but there's a lot going on.
No, thanks, Julie.
I'm happy to answer questions if you have them.
That's helpful. The school committee, before we go into some of the nuts and bolts, are there immediate questions that you wanted to ask, or are we okay to continue forward?
I think we have a few questions.
I just have one. The slide, the previous, the previous slide. Can you just give us a sense of how you, like, what percentage of teachers are kind of pretty solid on the left-hand column and, like, what's the, you know, what's the, you know what I'm asking?
Yeah, I do.
Okay, thanks.
So, I do. So all of our teachers went through trainings over the course of the spring. We ended up creating like a Friday training session. And so we, we trained teachers in the spring on things like Screencastify, Google Classroom, instructional technologies like Flipgrid and Padlet, because we were trying to build our own knowledge around, here, this works, this works really great for XYZ. So we were training people and, you know, having a lot of discussion around which technologies would work best for the task at hand. So I feel really comfortable with, with what people learned in the spring around Screencastify, deepening Google Classroom. But what we decided to do was take that a step further and make some decisions at each school level around what Google Classroom practices will look like in each building, so that we'll have common practices for the use of Google Classroom, and then common practices for CSAT, which is really where our instruction will come through to families and to students. And then on the other side of that, we're really working on deepening the instructional practice around using Google Slides and deepening that with Peer Deck. So we have new technologies that we've bought licenses for across the district that will, that are being deployed to all staff members so that we can ensure that we have really specific technologies that we're using that we can monitor and support all staff with. So that's not coming at people from 100 different directions. It's really specified and specific to the task, or the content, or the department, or the grade level that we're working with. That was a long answer, sorry, Annie.
Julie, may I ask a question of you on the, on that same slide, the Fall 2020? Social Emotional.
Yeah.
Supports. Can you talk about that a little bit? Because I know that's, you know, we've been talking about that and, you know, able to deliver social emotional in an online format.
So I think I didn't talk about this yet, but there's another component to online summer training that we've been offering all summer long to all teachers. So we call it Grid 2, which won't really make sense to a lot of people on the call, but for teachers, they'll get it. So we have this gigantic grid that we've broken down for teachers, and the grid focuses on things like Google Classroom and CSAT online learning. It's broken down to instructional strategies using technology supports like Flipgrid, Padlet, and Puzzle, Zoom, Google Hangouts, and those kinds of things. So it's like online tutorials for all of these different things that we've designed and organized for the district. In addition to that, we've been working with Yale over the summer. We had a week of small group meetings, cohort kind of meetings with different teachers who met with our Yale researchers and gave feedback in terms of what experiences they had with students and families in order to help build a stronger focus on social emotional learning for the fall so that we can make sure we're really targeting and supporting kids and families as needed, and making sure that we have that in our everyday instruction. In addition to that, we, we've been working with Elizabeth Englander. I know you're familiar with her because we bring her in to talk to families around anti-bullying and supports for students in need. She did a great online course on what happens when you bring kids back to school throughout a pandemic. She's done a ton of research on that. So our teachers have access to those trainings as well. So we're looking at building supports in at the beginning of school and then throughout our time with students to make sure that we're using all the good research that's out there and all the available resources that we have had.
Well, what, what actions are we taking to, to do that, to address the social emotional as well? So can't speak tonight, to address social emotional growth and issues and, you know, kind of.
Shannon, I have that in my outline.
Oh, good. Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Never mind.
So I'm talking more from a pedagogical standpoint. I know Pam has the real specifics that you're probably looking for.
I know Teresa wanted to jump in with a question.
Sure.
I think I actually might hold off on them. Julia, you're, are you staying on the call for the evening? Because you might, I might need you, but if not, I'll hold off until Pam, she may answer my questions.
Okay. Sure.
Okay, awesome. Thank you, Julie.
And I'm happy to come back and give updates, obviously, as we're going through the trainings and, you know, kind of sharing out for families how this is, you know, how we're working it through. And obviously, we'll have the health line for parents as well. So we'd be, we'll be sharing all of that as we get closer to the start of school with families.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let me see if I can bring up my plan documents. Just give me one second. I'm hoping this might answer some of the technical questions, and if it doesn't, we can, we can double back. Oh, WebEx, don't fail me now. I'm going to give it one more try. Sorry, y'all. I'm going to get it up as soon as I can. I can start talking in general while I'm fumbling to find this file. Adobe can give us a little difficulty in bringing it up, so I'm going to go and try and pull up our, our Word version. So I think when we're thinking about remote learning, what we tried to do was develop a model, and I think Julie gave us some really good background, that was an integrated hybrid remote concept where the basis of all instruction would, would be remote, even if we had some in-person components. So I think we're well positioned to toggle back and forth between the two, at least that's how we were thinking about the start of the year originally, that we would be prepared to begin in hybrid and then shift to remote if we needed to, or begin in remote and build toward hybrid if that was the situation. Obviously, we've, we've landed in the situation where we are starting with remote, with the game plan being building into a hybrid over time, focusing first on in-person instruction for our highest need students, primarily those students, and substantially separate programs. Allison can speak in greater detail on that in a bit. And then looking at potential for bringing students back at the earlier grades and building forward. I think what we know from our I think what we know from our study is that the, the older grades are the most problematic to transition to hybrid, mostly because of the complexity of their student schedules and the interconnectedness of all of the students and all of the staff, that it was very hard for us to get to a point where we were able to achieve a full program for kids under a hybrid model. So with that in mind, we constructed a remote model that actually replicates a school day. And as I said on the call earlier, while it replicates it and attempts to simulate it, it doesn't necessarily mean that someone will log on at eight o'clock in the morning and be chained to their computer for the entire day without any breaks or without any independent work or time for reflection or movement. The model really is set up. Are you seeing that on my screen now? Is I able to launch?
Yes, we can see it.
Okay. The model really was set up with a lot of the strong pedagogy that Julie outlined in mind, but also to meet the level of accountability and structure that we heard in terms of feedback from parents in the spring. So just to walk you through our general plan, you'll see that if we use the secondary as a jumping off point, the high school academic program will look exactly like it does if they're in the building when they are online. So if we look at a typical schedule, they will have a full course load available to them and they will move through their day with appointments with each of their teachers as they would be attending classes. Now that's not to say that when you go from A block to B block, you're just going to be listening to straight lectures straight through. You may have a few minutes of introductory material, be sent off into small sub-Zoom groups to work collaboratively with peers and come back at the end of or midway through the lesson to present to the remainder of the class. So I think if you take the basic, a good lesson construction we like to use in the classroom, you can transfer it to the remote environment plus a lot of new learning about how to build engagement and how to build community online. So for those who were concerned that it was going to be, remote was going to mean an asynchronous environment where people were just coming and going at their own pace, we will be expecting students to be active and involved in the entire day. We'll be taking attendance at the beginning of every class and attendance will be weighted my expectation into assessing the student. Typical assessments will be given. I know work is being done to ensure that the assessments for an online environment are appropriate, but the level of assessment, feedback, grading will be done. Students will be receiving regular report cards. We'll be utilizing Aspen to, to upload and track grades as we typically do. So all of the standard procedures and expectations for being an active participant in a classroom will exist in the online environment. For, for families and students in any grade level, if the synchronous world isn't, isn't for you and it's not what you were hoping for and it's not a good match, we are going to be investigating and making available an asynchronous model for people who opt into that. I think what we learned is that the overwhelming majority of people who responded to the survey and participated in our online forums at the end of the school year really wanted the structure and in the feel of a, of a real school day to, to promote routine and expectations. We're making a general expect, setting some general expectations about readiness for learning. We're asking that students dress for classes they would for school, that they work with parents or as if they're older individually identify a place in the home where they can work quietly, have some type of a desktop surface. Obviously it doesn't have to be their own, their own space or a desk proper. It could be a desk-like environment, but really to be prepared and engaged and ready to learn and on time for learning each day. Each level has a few variations on the schedule that are particular to that group. I know the advisory outreach at the middle school is going to look different a bit than the advisory outreach or the U Block construction at the high school. So if you have some detailed questions, we can try and get into them later. But as I said, I would really love to have those, that level of communication go out from the principals to their direct communities. What we're trying to cover today and show is that at each level, the general overarching expectations will be the same for focused time on learning, length of school day, teachers teaching from their classrooms, and the expectation that students will be present for all classes and ready to learn at that time. So those same expectations filter down to the elementary level or bubble up depending on how you're looking at it. But they are, they are formulated and put out in a developmentally appropriate way. So no, we will not have our youngest students online for six hours of screen time per day, but there will be an openness and an availability of the teacher throughout the day to work with and coach and do drop-in sessions. I'm happy to, we, we can answer more detailed questions on that later on. You'll see like at the high school and middle school, the full program of studies that's available there. Both, I think I had one question, like will accelerated math be available at the middle school? Yes, that was one of the reasons remote learning, I think was in contention for a way to start the year because it was through this model that we could offer that differentiated level of program. At the elementary level, differentiation looks different and it's done more within, within the classroom, but we'll be offering our full complement of, of, of studies along with SCL and response. So this is to your question, Shannon, so responsive classroom ruler and second step are integrated into regular classroom activities. In addition, if you log in and go through some of the supports that we have in place, you'll see a different type of SCL supported through our counseling program and outreach to families. I know all principals have an active list of students we were concerned with at the end of the year, students who may not have been active participants in the online environment. And there will be an initial outreach to ensure that those students and families have the supports that they need to be engaged and get off on the right foot this year. And the other SCL component, which is very broad, is we've been saying from the outset that remote learning doesn't negate in-person activities. And we are, the team is working very hard to organize and establish some beginning of the year community building activities at each school, whether it be opportunities for kids and families to come in and meet their teacher and establish kind of an in-person relationship before we transition to the online world. So I think some of those are examples of what we're, what we're doing in an effort to address the social emotional and community building needs of students and families. So I think that is a general overview of what the program will look like. And at the elementary level, this is just a typical schedule. Again, it's going to look slightly different at each grade level, but you see, we're using here the one that went with the hybrid, which it, it essentially has, it can swing either way if it needs to. So know that with our remote model, there's a still an eye toward bringing kids back in the building. And with the model that we've set forth, we think we can do it in a pretty smooth way when that time comes. So instead of me rambling on, I think Julie mentioned it. I'll just close by saying we will have an active help desk available for parents. The other question that's come up lately, I can't believe I forgot to mention this, is that we do have devices for all of the students. iPads will be the device for case two students and three, eight and nine, 12 will have Chromebooks available to them if needed so that every student can have a device. That was another walk away from the spring that over time, I think we all caught on to the fact that in the beginning, it thought, you know, everyone thought that they had enough at home, but as you kind of got into it, everybody needs their own device for an elongated period of time during the day. It was pretty clear to us that we're going to need to issue everybody's device right at the beginning of the year. And the other piece that we learned is that it can't be all screen time. Having some manipulatives, having some traditional paper and pencil activities available, having some readers to touch and, and to work with in real time will be helpful. So there will be supplies also being sent home. And I think John had said in the earlier meeting that there'll be a regular coming in and picking up of the materials that you'll need to participate in class. So I think the big walkaways are with the remote learning simulated school day that is attentive to the fact that screen time has to be monitored particularly with our youngest students. So that while the day will be structured and there will be an expectation to attend every class at the secondary and participate all day long at the elementary, there will be lots of breaks moved, built in for movement, downtime from the screen or non-computer-based work to do that can then be shared back, but that the teachers will be available throughout the day for touch base, support and answering questions. So I think that's the synopsis of it. Are there questions on this piece? And then we still have the, we can do a quick special ed update in the HVAC.
I have a quick question, if you wouldn't mind. So you mentioned the asynchronous model, you're investigating an asynchronous model. Is that a model that's being provided by us? Or is that something I've heard reference to some model that the state offers?
Yep. It's being offered by the Department of Education on a contract basis to school districts. So essentially, I can, I can pull up my little graph on that. We would, what we'll do is allow it as an alternative program option under the MERSD umbrella. So you could enroll in that program and still receive MERSD credit. It's all aligned to the state standards. So it may be a different delivery format, but it will be covering the same curriculum that we'll be offering locally in a different way. So when you think of the standards, the standards, the backbone and the instructional design, pedagogy and delivery is what we do locally to make it our own. They'll be using the same standards with whatever delivery model that program uses. But if it's an asynchronous model that you need for your, for the way your home is structured or the way you feel your child works better, it's a way to achieve Manchester Essex credit so that when they integrate back into the system, they can come right back in at the grade level that they should be on or that they're on track to be at. So we just want to investigate it a little bit more so we can explain it appropriately to families, but we will be getting that out ASAP for folks.
And then a follow-up to that, if somebody participates, because I've gotten this question a couple of times, it's putting the cart way before the horse, but I will ask it anyway. If somebody participates in that asynchronous model and we do bring athletics back at some point, will the students be eligible to participate in our MERSD activities like athletics?
I believe so.
Okay, okay. And then my comment was, you know, with regard to the six to 12 going online, I think what is critical to keeping these kids engaged, not only the academics, but small advisory groups to kind of touch back too. I think that's critical. I know you touched on that, but I definitely want to, you know, kind of highlight that. I think that kind of keeps the train moving forward for a lot of these kids. And it's a good way to check in to kind of see where they are, you know, kind of headspace wise. So.
That's all I have.
I know. Great. I might call on Allison to just give a little more detail on where we are with special ed, if she is still available.
Pam, I think we had other questions for you.
Oh, sorry. Sure.
I have questions. This is Teresa.
Yeah.
Is now, is now an okay time or is Allison on a time crunch or?
No, I, I don't think so. Allison, just send me a signal if you are on a time crunch.
All right. I've, I've got a couple of questions. I want to start with ones that have come from others more than once to me about secondary and they're a couple of quick questions. As we triage, kind of, you know, we're talking about prioritizing those high and special needs kids getting in-person instruction and also the younger grades. There's a couple of concerns about certainly our oldest students as well and in-person instruction, particularly science labs and things that can't be replicated quite so easily at home. So is there discussion on how some of our older students' concerns fall into that? And then the second one about secondary is has there been discussion about an adjusted start time? And then I have younger kid questions too.
So I don't think we're quite at the science lab discussion yet. I don't want to speak for Tricia, but that has not come up yet in our planning process. I think the focus right now is the beginning days of school, but it's something that we are aware would be helpful. And I lost the second part of your question.
Has there been discussion about an adjusted start time? In the morning?
Yes. So one of the things we need to do is be prepared to transition to hybrid at some point. So I believe they're setting the student's start time at eight o'clock. Because if we have to transition or bring kids in, number one, any change in the total school day is, is another issue for collaborative bargaining. So we're trying to stick to what we have in place already. And if we have to transition back to hybrid or we start to establish new practice, when we come back to full in-person, we are running into the bus issue again. So we would have to change the start time back to seven forty-five anyway. So I think the thinking is don't go too far with the change right now because we won't be able to accommodate it should we be in hybrid or in-person instruction.
Okay. Thank you. And then my younger kid questions, there are, there are two. And the first one's kind of the broader one. The second one's a lot easier. So I'm going to start with the harder one. So a lot of the concerns that I've had from other parents at the sec, excuse me, at the elementary level have all kind of boiled down to this idea that in the spring, what we experienced was a lot of, of coming at us. This is what you have to do in your own home. And, and I know I personally struggled with that with each new phase in the spring. Just, okay, there's new things that I now have to do in, in my home and, and there's a, there's a difficulty with that in trying to manage it, but also just the, the whole idea of being a partner in education if education's happening in my home. And I know there's been some professional development about that and best practices for remote learning. And I was wondering if either you or Julie would like to speak to that a little bit, this idea about making sure that it's a partnership with families, because I think that some of the struggles that we're feeling and the, the concerns and fears are based in what happened this spring. And that if we feel that we're partners in this process for, especially for the littlest kids where older ones can take a little more responsibility, then some of those needs for supports and not sure how to identify where to go with things start to go away. So how, how can that be, how is that being addressed?
I can take that. And then Pam, you can jump in. That's, that's been a big conversation for us, really thinking about how to outline for parents what a remote learning experience looks like for students so that their full, parents are fully aware of, of how to support that in the, in the home. But what we've been able to do is transition into a regular school day model so that as we prepare students for what a full day model will entail, I think people will become much more comfortable with the structures that we're organizing and creating across each school. And just to your point, Teresa, when we first went remote in the spring, we were dealing with a lot of moving parts, but we didn't really have the knowledge then that we have now around how to structure that and now, and then how to help people access information. So we're really looking at making things very clear and specific to each grade level so that there are no big surprises or, you know, three months down the road, now you have to transition, do something totally different. We're really looking at how to get materials home to families so that we're able to start the year off really strongly in a strong foot around the technology. And we really are hopeful that having a designated call-in center will be helpful to just answer questions on the fly. And even workshops, if we need to do that, to help parents feel comfortable with some of the technologies that we'll be using and all students will be using at home. So we're really aware of the fact that it's a learning curve for everybody, not just teachers, and that we have to support people across the board.
Thank you. I appreciate that. My, my hope going forward is just as, as these discussions continue, that we remember that when we're, again, when someone's educating in their own home or, you know, you're coming into our homes to do this now and it's still our safe space. And so it has to be a partnership or it has to feel like a partnership, I think. And I think that that will make a big difference for families. The easy question was, what is an expected timeline for, for some of this more detailed school communication so people can look toward getting materials and getting set up for things?
So, I can't say, oh, go ahead Pam. I don't know how you want to handle that. The, the principals will be sending out information specifically to grade levels and families around all the school structures and how that will work. But in addition to that, we should be sending out more information on the parent site and the help desk and things to that nature within the next week. So I would say at the end of next week, we'll have our framework up and ready to go. And we can test out some of those scenarios to get a sense of people's needs, families' needs, and we'll build it, we'll continue to build it over the course of the spring, I'm sorry, over the course of the fall as we get up and off the ground.
And I know the principals are on the line. So if I'm speaking out of turn, I would say beginning, probably mid-week. I would say beginning probably mid-week, next week, we're going to start to see some of the traditional back-to-school class lists and things of that nature. Or class assignments, I guess I should say.
Yeah, Pam, this is Jennifer. They should be going out next week at the elementary level. We're just trying to make sure we've got everything buttoned up and correct because it's important to get it right. So they should be going out next week.
It's probably helpful to mention, I know you were working on developing all of that structure, so that's available in case we start to flip a switch or transition into the hybrid, right? So you thought it out not only for the immediate, but for the eventual.
Yeah, I think that's the part that's tricky, is that we have to be prepared either way. So that's why it's taken a little bit longer, and there's a lot of thought that's gone into this. So yeah, for sure. But I, I do think that we'll be starting to communicate more directly with people because the information is starting to become more clear to all of us as we've been planning over the last week. And I did let the kindergarten parents know that we have a meeting tomorrow to do some specific planning for kindergarten, and we'll be reaching out to them ASAP. And I've already had a few people reach out to me, and I've been in contact with them. So we're on it. We have a, a good planning meeting tomorrow for specifically kindergarten.
Thanks, Jen.
Yep.
Thank you all.
I have a few, and I'll do rapid fire. Sub-Zoom, how hard is that? How hard is it to transition from a Zoom to a sub-Zoom?
I'm a web user, so does a zoomer want to give?
Our zoomers are on the phone, I'm sure, or calling in.
You're talking about sub-Zoom, Annie.
I thought we were having rooms that were part of.
Yeah, breakout rooms. It's, uh, it's, this is Joanne Mayno, by the way. That is not challenging, and our teachers all know how to do it. And there's a lot of different extended tools, I should say, that we will be exploring. It'll be a great tool for supported classes and small group work.
Great. Second question. I know that there were some questions about peer study groups. And, you know, I know that at work, I can't, some, I don't know things. And so I, I collaborate with other people, and I learn a lot. And I wonder if you can talk a little bit about some of the learning that is going to be different? Because we're not going to have MCAS, I don't think. And so what kind of collaborative and different skills are we going to, are kids going to be learning because they have to?
We're talking a lot about how to create assessments, but not your typical online standardized test, which we're, I think, all used to with MCAS, but more assessment via content, obviously. But project-based learning, how can we build more practices into that? And how can we work across grade level, across the grade level to support project-based learning ideas and sharing of content, and doing things of that nature? We feel like it's a good time for that. Obviously, we have the learning curve in terms of getting this up and off the ground, but our goal is to, to really work some of those practices in so that we have a more balanced approach to the work that we're doing. So it's a good, it's a good, strong thought process on our end for that.
Yeah. I also think that, you know, my kids who came from Manchester Essex when they went to college formed study groups because they knew that that was going to be how they would succeed. So I think starting that early.
Our teachers are in study groups right now. So I feel like, you know, we're all learning and relying on each other in so many ways.
Yeah. When we transition from remote to hybrid, will we retain the full educational program?
Yes. Okay, go right ahead.
Unless we do so, yes, at the elementary.
And then classroom management, I, I don't know if we want to get into that now. We could talk about it at another meeting, but I'm, I'm really interested in how parents and teachers are going to be communicating. Couple of emailed me and said, you know, I didn't know what was going on with my kid. And so I just wonder, not, maybe, maybe not this week, but next time we meet, if we can talk a little bit about classroom management, teachers establishing expectations for their classes, and how they communicate with parents so that parents feel like they can go to the teacher first, and then if they're not getting the answer, escalate. But if we can talk a little bit about that next time.
Annie, I want to go back and re-answer your question.
Okay.
About hybrid and full program. So at the elementary, we could start to slide, when we can answer some of those questions that we've listed as indicators, the, the program can be available in the high-flex model. At the secondary, what the hurdle we need, and we should add this to our indicators because it's important at the secondary. What we need to be able to do with the secondary to offer the whole program in a hybrid is to get clearance that we can have cohorts of sixty students that interact together all day, and, and an approval that it is safe to have teachers interact with sixty to a hundred students at a given time, at a given, a cycle. That, that is the big, that's the big clearing point at the, at the secondary for full program access.
Yeah, if we could add that, I think that that's, that's a critical thing. Because I think that that, that was a, that's a huge driver for why many of us were not happy with the hybrid model.
Yep.
Pam, where does that clearance come from? Clearance of sixty kids in a cohort, clearance of teachers being able to interact with sixty to one hundred kids. Is that a state thing?
Well, to revisit the whole how to build a cohort concept, it's supposed to be twelve to twenty-four students. We decide, we determine six feet socially distance, which put us at twelve because we couldn't get twenty-four six feet socially distance in a classroom. And those cohorts are supposed to be bubbled to a certain degree, so not interacting with other people. So if you follow that guidance, and I, I'll go on record, I know I, you know, people probably disagree with me about the consistency of the state guidelines. I asked that question to the state in our plan submissions, and I still don't have a response from them as to whether or not a sixty-student cohort meets the guidelines. I don't think a common sense reading of those guidelines says that it does. I know we've talked about it with the DPH reps on our group, and we've talked, I've talked about it with different people throughout the state. I think that's a big roadblock in implementing full-program hybrids at the secondary. You know, I mean, you're not allowed to have gatherings of what more than twenty-five people indoors. I can't see where they would allow for, where it allows for sixty people to interact over the course of a week, and a teacher to have, have exposure to a hundred and twenty different people.
You outlined that in a slide.
Yeah.
There was a slide that you had on that.
Yeah, I can pull it up too. We either need the state to amend its guidance, or we need somebody, we need the DPH to tell us that's safe. Thank you. Yep. Other questions?
Can I ask one more? Sorry. And I'm, I may have.
Of course.
So you can just, you can throw this back at me if we did. But, but in, in Julie's presentation, I think Shannon had asked about the social emotional learning, and, and you had said that there was going to be some more of the nuts and bolts in that. Did I, did I miss that? Did you say all of those things? And I missed them.
Well, like, we have, like, the in-classroom SEL would be things like responsive classroom ruler and second step. The full counseling program would be the other level of SEL, which is more the direct supports to identified students. There'll be, like, the telehealth model of counseling and support will be available. And we have, all of the schools have worked to identify students who weren't engaged at the beginning of the year, I'm sorry, at the end of the year last year, to do initial outreach to help, help them get prepared to be engaged and fully participatory this year. I also know that we had built in last year, and I'm assuming it will be tuned and carry forward, a level of tiered response to help kids at different levels with different identified needs adjust and be supported in the environment. See, those are just off the top of my head, and I know they are sprinkled throughout these plans.
Okay. And if a child isn't eligible for specific services with a five oh four and IEP, and/or isn't already identified, how do parents access that? Who should they go to first?
I would say the classroom teacher and/or the principal.
Thank you.
Yep. So maybe I'll ask Allison to just share with us now what the current thinking is around special education? Because I know she's been a little bit, she's been held back in her planning efforts because she needed us to make some full decisions about the structure of the programming. So she's really just started digging in to how we're going to identify and provide services. So Allison, if you're still available and would like to just bring us up to speed on what we need to know, that would be a huge help.
That sounds great, Pam. Thank you. So what, I've spoken a bit, as have you, around special education students and remote learning, and the school committee has supported instruction for high-needs special education students in person. So we're still in the process of collaborating with the teachers' union around what that will look like. And in addition to that, we need to consider teacher availability to deliver services, just as the district as a whole was concerned about having enough personnel to deliver an in-person model. So is the concern in special education. So that, these are issues that we need to work through as we make some decisions. When I first brought forth the recommendation for in-person instruction for special education, I'm using, I was using, and I will continue to use the Department of Education's definition of high needs, where we prioritize students who have seventy-five percent or more of their educational program outside the classroom. So when we think about those students, Pam had on some earlier slides that we're talking about self-contained program, special education programs. We're not talking about the entire two hundred-plus students in special education. We're looking to start small, to work with the teachers' union, to look at staff availability, and prioritize programs like Earl and Swing that are self-contained. If I had to prioritize beyond that, Swing would receive the highest priority because those are students K through twelve who have severe special needs, and some of them require augmentative communication, to even communicate and engage with teachers and other students, making remote learning very, very difficult. So that is our top priority. I was also asked by the Department of Ed to prioritize preschool, which we intend to prioritize for in-person instruction as well. And again, there is more work that needs to be done because, before we have firm answers even on that. But we are starting with our neediest cohort of students, as I have described, using the Department of Ed's definition. We can develop and share a list of how students in special education would be prioritized from there. However, that is also pending the outcome of collaboration with the teachers' union. But that is information that I hope to have at some point for parents so they can understand how that's being prioritized. We also need to see how this goes. It could be that the COVID numbers go up, that there's a spread in the community, and that we can't continue with in-person instruction. It could also be that the numbers are, continue to be great, and we can start to look at how we could integrate some other students into the program. And of course, there's the conversation around elementary, and how and when can we integrate some hybrid learning for those students? Um, I also just want to mention, and again, more, when I have more information, I will be communicating to parents. So I am in the process of working on that and hoping to get there soon. But one thing is certain, we, it is our intention to implement students' IEPs, and we will be designing remote learning plans for each student with parent input that will happen when teachers return to the building, but prior to students starting the school year, so that each student's liaison can be involved in that conversation and have a conversation with parents. We also will be collecting and considering progress data, not only from the spring, but also in the fall, once we have a more structured remote learning program in place than we did in the spring. So we'll be looking at that data also, and monitoring very closely around student progress for students on IEPs. So that's my update, and I'm happy to take any questions from the school committee.
I have a question.
You go first. You, you're really faster.
Allison, you mentioned that all students in special ed will be developing remote learning plans. So I heard from, I think in the, in the town hall meeting, there was somebody who asked, who said their, their child wasn't, wouldn't meet the high-needs category, but really struggled to access the remote learning in the spring. So would a remote learning plan help parents like that whose kids were struggling? Would it have, like, specific accommodations to address remote learning?
Yes, absolutely. So as I mentioned before, I, it would be ideal to develop a phased-in plan of increasing the number of students receiving services in person and looking at the students who really struggled in accessing remote learning. But instruction will look different in the fall, and we will be meeting with parents to problem-solve around issues they have had with remote learning to date. And yes, that conversation will be part of developing the remote learning plan.
Thank you.
Just have two questions for you. We've had, I've just, I've seen a lot of feedback from parents who have kids on IEPs who don't know what's going on. And while I know that you haven't fully developed a plan, is there any way of just reaching out to them? Or if you already have, just to kind of assure them that, you know, you see those kids, you, you know that you need to address it? Just, I think there's a lot of anxiety. I mean, there's anxiety among everybody, but those folks are particularly concerned about, you know, lost learning in the spring and now going forward.
Yeah. Well, that was one reason I wanted to speak tonight, but I know, I know not everyone is at this meeting. So I certainly can follow up with an email to parents around where we are at this time. I wish we had more concrete information, but as I've said, there are some issues we need to work through internally before I can be more concrete. But I, I can certainly give parents an update based on what I said tonight.
And I just have one other question, and this is more of a student services question. I was talking to somebody who's a mental health provider, who said, you know, we have kids that we've identified at risk, you know, in the spring. But, you know, this, this pandemic has gone on, it's taken a toll on many families, and there are some folks who previously were not at risk, but now have fallen into that category. And I just wonder how we can get physical eyes on some kids to make sure they're okay. And I know you don't have an answer for that now, but I wonder, I know you probably have, you know, thoughts about this, but that, I think, is a concern for everybody on this school committee, is just those kids at risk. And so.
I, I want to tag in on Annie's question too. Sorry, is that okay? Okay.
Permission granted.
Thank you. So often, kids who are struggling a little bit, like, if you're having a hard time learning how to read, or struggling to interact with your peers, your teacher might notice, and they may do some screening assessments in the classroom or get going. Will these kinds of just screen, screening activities take place? Like, usually in a classroom, I would think the, you know, the special ed teacher could come in and do like a, I don't know if you still have the teams, like the, whatever. So how will that all happen in remote?
That is a great question. So we are required to have the teacher assistance team in place. So we are required to have the teacher assistance team in place. So those teams will need to continue to, to meet remotely. And I'm glad you asked this because teachers can refer students to these teams to problem-solve around difficulties students are having, but parents can too. Parents can do that by contacting the principal or the chair of the team or their guidance or school adjustment counselor to let them know that they have concerns and they would like their child to be referred to the team. So that is something parents can always request. Those teams will meet, I can't tell you the format that it will take, but that is something that needs to continue during remote learning. There are other supports in general education, and I know that we have plans to try to make some in-person connections with all students around the transition back to school. So that may be helpful in addressing some of your concerns. But it is an important issue to monitor. And I would even suggest that, and I know this is going to happen actually, that students are, so we know what students have historically had difficulty, or there might have been some flags in the spring around difficulties that they were having. But when students are changing schools, teachers or administrators will be speaking with the sending teachers to see, are there students that we need to keep an eye on in particular? So for example, I was just emailing with Joanne Mayno today around, how can we identify students in fifth grade transitioning to sixth grade who we might need to keep an extra eye on because they could be more vulnerable going into remote learning in the fall?
Allison, it's Joanne, we, we have that data.
Oh, great, you already have it, you're fast.
We, we thought about it in the spring, who knew?
Yeah, great.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Can I just say one other thing? Given the situation we're in, I kind of feel good about some of these hires we've, I mean, not that I didn't feel good about them before, but, you know, we have an assistant principal in the middle and high school that can address some of these issues. We didn't, you know, we were thin on that kind of personnel. And we have great folks in our guidance area too. So this is good to know that you guys are really thinking about this stuff and that we have this solid group of people that are there to help us make sure that we're getting stuff done for those more vulnerable folks.
Agreed. Any other questions?
Are they general questions or specifically for Allison?
I don't know, I was kind of waiting for you to come back on and tell us what was happening next.
I am talking away over here. I'm asking, are there any more general questions or are we ready to hear a little bit about the HVAC system? Because that's, I don't think it needs to go on the indicator list based on the direction it's going, but the HVAC discussion is, is I think a critical one in some of the work we're doing with the staff to ensure that the building is safe and meets particular levels of standard for air circulation, given some of the concerns that have been presented. So Avi and Jason have really been running point on that. And if we're ready to transition, I'd love for them to give us an update on where we stand there. And then I can just close out on where we are with the why and some childcare opportunities.
I have two super fast questions, they're so fast though. Okay, one is, is the, the meal pickup service that we had coordinated with the spring, is that continuing? Or are we doing something else, or is that still a process?
Yes and yes, so there will be meal service. The goal is to get it to be a local pickup. And what we're trying to figure out is it, is our kitchen going to do it? Or are we going to team up with a community that has a larger, that's running a larger operation and just get the meals to a local location?
Great, thank you. And the other one was, can you tell us anything about some of the critical hiring that, that we're all kind of waiting on, especially at the elementary level? I know there's a few key openings.
I would say, I think those boxes have been checked.
Excellent, thank you.
I've been signing letters in my spare time.
Excellent, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, Avi, I'm going to kick it over to you to give us a summary of where we are with the HVAC issues and the open 150 E's that we are working our way through. And I can put the summary, I have some summary notes that I can just throw on the screen.
Do you want me to wait or do you want me to get started?
I think you can, I think I found them. Nope, that's Julie's notes on the hybrid. There we go.
Yeah, hi everyone. So, you know, on a previous meeting, we talked about the HVAC systems. We talked about the general information that we received in the guidance, which is really, when you try to simplify what can be somewhat technical information, it's all around maximizing fresh airflow. And we talked about the flexibility that we have in our district. That's really been improved over the past couple of years as our technology has improved, both with the new middle high school, as well as new Memorial School classroom wing that's coming online in time for the start of school, as well as the, and both of those buildings have very modern building automation systems that allow us to have great digital controls over our HVAC system. And we have done a significant upgrade to Essex Elementary about two and a half years ago through a partnership with the Town of Essex that was grant-funded, which, as we talked about in the last update, really helps us to start with good systems in place. We also talked about upgrading filter types to the maximum industry standard in any place that we're able to do that. And also talking about increasing the frequency of changes of filters as well. So those are some of the big picture items that are talked about in the guidance. And I think we tried to introduce the fact that we were starting in a good position. We've been pretty busy over the summer getting our systems ready like we do every year with special attention to this issue of how to maximize airflow. Another item that was in the guidance was a recommendation of consulting with an engineering firm that handles HVAC engineering, heating, ventilation, air conditioning. I'm going to use the HVAC acronym many times to make for those who are not mechanical people. And so we did, in fact, bring a consulting firm on board. They've gone through all of our buildings. And the goal of having them help us was to really analyze how to best optimize the systems that we have to meet the guidance across each of the different buildings. They've been on site, they're working on wrapping up their report. And they've provided a checklist to our facilities manager, Jason Waldron, and Steve Hunt, our maintenance supervisor. I talked a little bit about the fact that we have a very strong team and in particular with Jason's expertise, but also Steve Hunt, who has really done a lot to in-source a lot of our understanding of HVAC systems. We really feel like we know the systems very well. But by getting the outside engineer to come in, they have been able to give us a checklist of everything we want to make sure we do prior to the start of school. We've invested a considerable sum into making sure we're already hitting on those items. A lot of them were things that we're already doing, like preventative maintenance. We're cleaning out all the ductwork, et cetera. We've been repairing parts to, you know, various aspects of the system like exhaust sands, et cetera. But, you know, what we understand is through the checklist that they're providing us, we are going to be in very good position to open the buildings for the start of the year and have, and have healthy air and good air quality airflow. So there are some other things I can talk about, you know, that, that the recommendations include. For example, a lot of systems are designed to normalize, sorry, normally economize fresh air intake. A lot of, in a non-COVID environment, a lot of folks are focusing on how to minimize energy usage and cost savings. And, and that is a question of balancing how much fresh air intake you have and recycle there. But as the guidance is pretty clear about and common sense indicates, we really want to focus on maximizing fresh air intake. So we've been working with the engineering firm to understand the various settings overrides that we want to put in place to make sure that we are not focused on economy, but really focused on maximum fresh air. There are, we talked about upgrading filter types. There will be some spaces based on the type of mechanical system that we have in place where we will add some on-the-ground HEPA filtration systems. That's another thing that you see in the guidance from the DESE. And in a lot of schools where they have much older buildings, that's going to be very common. In our case, it's going to be more the exception than the rule. And those filters are really designed to supplement what you can do through the centralized filtering system. So where we can upgrade the systems, the filters in the centralized system to, you know, the maximum industry standard, they call it MERV, that's going to be done. There's certain cases where we're actually not able to do that just because the, the system won't allow you to do that. But that's where the guidance is pretty clear that you want to use HEPA systems on the site, and we'll have those in place as well, those have been ordered. So from what I'm seeing, we're very far along, I think we're in good shape. I think there are a couple of last little items we're going to do prior to the start of school. We're, I think, have an air balancing consultant that's coming in, which is, you know, a sub-subconsultant, just to take this to the extra level, to make sure that the systems are performing as designed. Because the engineering firm is really a design engineering firm. So this is going to be kind of a check on that balance, make sure it's working the way we think it is. And we're not expecting really any surprises, but it will certainly give us the opportunity to fine-tune where, where needed. And then, you know, the guidance also talks about, and we will certainly be doing, running the system for at least a week prior to the start of school, just to have a whole building flash show. So those are the basic items we're going to do. I, I feel very good that, based on the technology upgrades we've done over the years and the investment that our communities have made in, in modern buildings, some of the grant work we've done with the Town of Essex, and having a good investment on in-house staff and having people who really know their stuff, but also bringing in outside opinions to check our estimates that we really, we really are looking at this from every angle. And I think we're going to be in very good shape to start off from a position of strength. Pam, you did mention the 150E request. So we have received a request for information from the Teachers Association about the nature of the system. And once the engineering firm is complete with their report, my understanding is that a lot of the answers will be in there and they'll certainly help us to answer any questions that aren't there. But from what I've read, the, those, those questions are really about making sure we're aligned with the guidance and any other standards such as OSHA, a federal standard for workplace safety. And I feel very comfortable that we're going to be in good shape there as well. So that's my overview, and I don't know if Jason's on the line. He tends to get more involved in the, in the weeds and the nitty-gritty. So that's my best attempt at giving you a high-level overview, but I'm happy to take any questions if you have any.
I have a little one, Avi, it's Teresa. For the half of classrooms that, or for whatever rooms don't have the advanced mechanism to deal with the fresh air intake, and it says dampers can be adjusted manually, can someone explain that like I'm five? So are we talking about teachers having to know when to adjust it and actually doing a thing? Or is this something that's done at the beginning? Help.
Yeah, so good question. So that, that part of the plan talks about whether the building automation system controls the dampers, which are basically almost like, they're like flaps that will open and close to let the air in and out. And typically, the building automation system tells them when to open and when to close based on what is sensing in the room for room conditions, either percentage of fresh air or how many people are occupying it, like carbon dioxide, et cetera. So there are some areas where the building automation system hasn't been extended. In Essex Elementary, for example, we did the upgrade, it doesn't cover every space. Those are areas where we will, our facilities department, not the teachers, will be in charge of maintaining and keeping an eye on those systems. So, and as I mentioned, you know, our, our main person there, Steve Hunt, is very familiar with those systems. We've had many conversations about that and how to do that. It requires more attention and more effort, but it's certainly not something that is beyond our capabilities and it is not something the teachers are going to need to worry about.
Thank you.
Hi, Avi, it's Annie. I had a conversation with Brendan, and this came up at the Board of Selectmen's meeting on the last Monday, which was about parity. And, you know, we talked a little bit about that when we were looking at the school vote, about making sure that Essex Elementary was on par in terms of technology, resources. And, you know, I'm looking at this slide and wondering, you know, the, the manual adjustment of the HVAC dampers at Memorial, and also you have the same thing happening at Essex. And I just wondered if you could speak a little bit to this, you know, we did half of the school and we still have, we need to extend the system. And I'm wondering, in terms of that parity question, where we are with this and what we would need to do? You know, is there green grant money that we can apply for again to kind of finish the system? Or what, what can we do to get Essex at parity with Manchester as we bring Memorial, the new Memorial School online?
Sure, well, the first thing is, from what I've heard from our engineering firm, the fact that we don't have complete footprint, manual, I see I just got bumped out of the VM, so I'm just going to go phone only. But the fact that we don't have a upgraded system in every space does not mean that we can't comply with the guidance. And the feeling that they've given us is that we can, so that's step one. Obviously, when you have an automated system, it makes it a lot easier to manage. It's more energy efficient and also doesn't require, you know, a staff person to manually keep an eye on things. And so, for example, you know, the kids are going to be moving into the, when we go back to the buildings, to the classroom wing, and that's going to be all on the new system. But the parts of Memorial that are still in the older building, they're not covered by that automated system. Similarly, the other half of Essex Elementary that you referenced is not. Now, a year from now, as we move into the final spaces of Memorial Elementary, that will be addressed. And when we talked about our capital plan, we did talk about extending the automation system to the other portion of Essex Elementary. So that's on our capital plan. We have talked with the Town of Essex about whether we might access some of those green grant funds to do that because it can be several, you know, 150 to 300,000 if memory serves, depending on exactly what's done. But like I said, it's on our plan, it's something we intend to do. If we can get grant funding, great, if we can't, it may be something that we want to proceed with anyway. And the last we heard, the Town, just as background, has been very generous, the Town of Essex, in sharing its green grant funds with the school department. And I think we took the lead in the first two or three years of their grant. They took one year off to do some town-related projects, which we certainly understood. And I think there was conversation about whether we might get back at some point in the, in the near future to work with them again. So again, big high-level answer is, it's not needed to hit the guidance, but it will certainly make our job easier. And it is something that we're intending to do, either through grant funds or through our own stabilization reserve fund.
So just as a follow-up on that, when we look at our reserves, because I was looking at that slide the other day, we have, I think, like 540, I don't remember what the number was, in stabilization, which is what we use for capital projects. Is that, was it, it was in the $400,000 range? So to me, that is, that's kind of sacred money, we aren't touching that, it's in a lockbox.
489, Annie, 489.
That's pretty good, I was kind of close. But no cigar. So I just wonder, you know, when we're talking about, if we can have a budget update next meeting to talk about, okay, what's committed, where are we going to see some savings because we're starting remote? There are a lot of questions on the chat during the forum at 5 o'clock about, well, wait a minute, you know, if you guys go back to hybrid, you're still going to incur those costs. And so I just wonder if we can revisit those, our budget, where we've landed, kind of where we are with reserves? And, and is it possible to kind of project? And, and is it possible to kind of project out? Because we had done that in January, but I don't know if we've really looked at that again. So, thank you.
Yes, that makes sense.
I think we prepared some of that information for a couple of meetings ago. I'd be happy to revisit it. I think the short answer was that the reserve positions going into this crisis have been strong, thankfully. And the fact, as you may all remember, that we earned a lot of interest income on the bonds that we floated for the Memorial School project while the money was waiting to be used month by month and worked down, has built up our stabilization to 489 and that we anticipated money to flow back in that fund through FY '20. And so, once we get our E and D certified for FY '20, we'll come back with a vote for that. So that does help us with our stabilization. But obviously, some of the things that we need to spend, regardless of what model we do, we're hoping that we can get some grant offsets through FEMA money, as well as through some of the DESE grants. And then short of that, yes, some of the, we will be dipping into some rainy day funds on top of the fact that, as we all remember, our FY '21 budget did start to use some of the rainy day funds to adjust for the fact that we knew the state aid was going to be a challenge because tax receipts at the state level are low. And we did not want to reduce our program because we felt like we had gotten it to a place where we didn't want to jeopardize the quality of the program. So it's a great question. Happy to revisit it next week.
Have we gotten any? Do we know what the state, I heard that we were going to get the same, we were going to get level funding from, on chapter 70. Is there any other word on any other state budgets that we should be aware of? Great.
Heard nothing.
Really helps.
Yeah.
Avi, I know you had a-
On the phone. Sorry, go ahead, Pam.
I was like, I think you had a meeting this morning where maybe something, something was, it would have been a meeting at which if there was any information, it was probably discussed. Did you learn anything?
No, no. Basically, what we know is that the state, I guess I could share one thing, which is that the state, we talked about this a couple of meetings ago, where we said that they did say they wanted to level fund chapter 70, but that was through a partial year budget that did not go the whole way through the year. And I think the sentiment is that prior to an election season, we're not going to see a whole lot of change. And in fairness to the state, they really have a lot of uncertainty around state receipts. So we don't even know for sure that we're out of the woods for this fiscal year, but we're certainly better off than where we were in May when we reduced the budget, with the exception of the fact that we've since then incurred a significant number of costs just to comply with COVID. Obviously, we will save quite a bit of costs if we, you know, in a remote model, transportation being one of the most obvious. But it's still going to be expensive regardless. And while there are grant funds available, at this point, it is very possible that we could exceed the allotment that we get at Manchester Essex.
Avi, I couldn't remember the exact figure of, what was the dollar figure per pupil for the CARES money? Was it 225 or 325?
There are several grants. One of them is the return to school grant that's under CARES, and that's 225 per pupil. There's also an additional grant that's 80% of your Title I funding. That's known as the ESSER grant, which we've applied for and was approved. There's a remote learning technology grant. We were told that we shouldn't expect much more than 20% matching funds, 20 cents on the dollar of what we invest. So there are several grants, but that 225 is, could be one of the bigger ones and the estimate for that is about 300,000.
And the one that's matching to Title I, I think it's important for us to explain, that money needs to be shared with any other private school in our LEA that wants to access the funds or qualifies to access the funds. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. That was one of the ones. That was part of the federal provision. You might have heard a bit about it in the news where the U.S. Department of Education wanted to insist that those funds were shared with private schools. So, and to be honest, our Title I, which is an income-based federal program for students, low-income students, is, you know, much smaller than a lot of other districts. That money tends to flow towards urban districts. So the grant that's 80% of the number, that's already not very big. And then you take out the private school portion, not a significant grant there.
Who determines, who determines the split on that?
The split on which?
On the funds that are shared with the private schools. Betsy DeVos?
Yep. So Pam's right. Well, yeah, so the U.S. Department of Education did come out with some guidance on exactly how the formula should work. And it's integrated right into the workbook application that you submit to the Department of Ed. So it's very, very straightforward.
Other questions on the budget or some thoughts about what you'd like to see next meeting? Annie, my takeaway from what, you, you kind of want to see the picture of the budget, like where we, like what we were talking about almost every meeting in the spring. Kind of where are we, what do you think is going to happen there? And then kind of an update, I think what we can do is, I think it's a very good question. Like as we, if we are stepping into hybrid incrementally over time, what does the budget look like in a step-by-step fashion?
Right.
We're showing the elementary half, it's a thing, elementary hybrid. So it's looking like half the cost, but if we're doing just smaller chunks for shorter periods of time, we can kind of map out what that might look like.
Right. And how much money do you kind of have to hold in a limbo, right? Because there's, you don't know what's going to happen with, you know, a surge or anything like that. And I know that we're going to meet with the two towns this week and they're going to have the same kinds of questions. So, and I think, you know, together, you know, all of us who are in collaboration will probably have some questions that we want to ask and we can present those at the next meeting for that. But I think there are a lot of other questions that came up tonight that we'll see in the chat from the earlier session. And I'm sure we're going to get feedback today. But I think it would be great to start developing some FAQs and, I know there are a couple of people on the committee that know how to write, so we can help with that.
Great.
I'm looking at somebody with the first name Eric. But, you know, what can we do to start solidifying some of this and have it as publicly available? And then we'll have other questions, I'm sure, for the week.
Sure. And I have a couple of things that might be nice to, if it's not the next meeting, well, actually, by the time the next meeting, it is probably going to be pertinent. Things that are kind of big bang for your buck within families, to students and parents, sports, clubs, activities, just a general overview of where different things are with that and what the considerations are. Sports is a little bit of a question mark right now, but I think we're expecting some breaking news in the coming days as to what will be offered and who is going to make the decision about what gets offered. So stay tuned on that. And yes, it makes sense to talk a little bit about what we can possibly do for clubs and activities. Thanks. Those are good reminders and that there's a little, there's a reference to them in the general plan, but it's, it basically says online where applicable, and I think we need to define that. So thank you for bringing that up. I can close, and then if you wanted to have your, just with a quick update on opportunity for childcare. The North Shore YMCA is working with us to stand up a local childcare option for people who need it. Basically, they work independently. They have been approved by the state as a provider of childcare during the COVID crisis. I know they worked closely with the state to provide the emergency childcare services for essential workers back in the spring. They have appropriate certifications, plus they are early childhood certified and early childhood certified the sites. So they, along with the Boys and Girls Club, have been identified by the state as good partners in this. And I think the good news is we already had a working partnership with our local Y, so it was a fairly easy transition. They are going to work independent of us, but hopefully be able to utilize our sites or sites within Manchester and Essex to provide a full-day childcare opportunity at a relatively inexpensive cost. Their programs are always available with financial assistance and a sliding scale based on income. So no one would be turned away based on ability to pay. We will be getting information, people out on that. They're working on the brochures. So they will have a full day and an extended day option for families. And I think what we know about the programs that they've offered and how they're structuring them, their guided support programs, so students would be engaging in their remote learning throughout the day and have some coaching there onsite by their staff to, to work and engage in a productive way. They'll also build, their brochure will cover it, but they will build in some movement breaks and stretch breaks and lunch will be provided. So all of the things to ensure that they are not just logged into screen time all day, but that they're accessing the program, fulfilling their academic responsibilities, but also having some support in non-screen time activity as well. Their ratio, I believe it's going to run at two people to 10 kids at six foot socially distance. So they're following and required to follow all of the same social distancing guidelines and health and safety measures that we are. But because of the structure and the type of staff that they're able to hire, they are going to be able to do what I think we're concerned we can't do, which is hire two students to 10 to 12, two facilitators to 10 to 12 students, so that they would be supported during the day. So that's the update on that. I'm pleased that they're able to do this. I know ideally, we would all be in school and this wouldn't even be an issue and we wouldn't have to be figuring out how to provide this level of support. But I do feel really good that they have been able to pull this together. We had a great response to the, the quick survey of interest that we put out. About 100 or so people would be interested in, in learning more about the program and potentially participating. So Jason and Avi are working with Chris Bevelacqua at the Y. He's fantastic to try and identify some spaces that they could use. So it seems like there'll be a lot of email flying next week. We should have things out to folks next week on, on this option as well. Pam, is that going to be limited to our district students for this specific, like for programs at our sites? Yes, the one that we're talking about right now would be our kids. Thank you. Yep. And it's probably worth saying, oh, go ahead, Sarah.
No, go ahead. Finish your thought.
I was just going to say, there's also, we're thinking about, let's solve the immediate problem. But as we're talking about the immediate problem of getting it organized and publicized to people, we're also talking about building it with some transitional components so that when we shift to hybrid, just, you know, I think that's a little piece that gets lost in the, do you support hybrid or do you support remote? Hybrid was going to require three days of support at home anyway. So what we're trying to do is identify space now and then secondary space. Should we start transitioning back to hybrid and the initial spaces are no longer available? So we've got a part A and a part B of the planning that we're doing. Just so you know that we are thinking about the future and having it be able to transition along with our other plans. Sorry, sorry. Didn't mean to cut you off.
Yeah. While we're talking about childcare, and you don't have to answer this question tonight, but I know a lot of people are talking about pods and that there are different kinds of pods. There are pods where you get to, you have a family maybe that, or two families who are all sort of quarantine-ing together already. Those children, those parents can share the responsibilities of watching a group of children during the day who are then, you know, contained. There are other people who are hiring teachers to supervise their children's remote learning at home. Do you have any thoughts you'd like to share on that situation?
I'll start with, I get it. I know we've got, I've got people in my own family who are pursuing pod models. What I would caution, and this isn't, you know, to Teresa's point earlier, this isn't to say we're telling you what to do, but as you're forming your pods, be attentive to what class your child is in. Because if we truly are pursuing migrating to the hybrid, if your child is in a pod with someone from a different cohort, it could be problematic down the line. So I try to keep a pod consistent with at least the class that your child is in, if at all possible. It may be impossible and it may be a bridge that we have to cross when we get there. But when we transition back in, we likely won't be able to reorganize class lists and splits based on pods. Not to be Debbie Downer.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So I think that covers the updates on all that is remote and hybrid and some in-person and everything we're trying to accomplish for the fall. So still lots of work to do. I feel like every time we hit one of these meetings, we've hit a new milestone and it feels like there's going to be less to do on the list. But by the time the meeting's over, there's just as much to do as in preparation for the meeting before. So I, I think, like I said, you're going to start to see a lot move quickly over the next couple of weeks. And I just appreciate everybody's patience and support and honesty through the process because I think there's been a really, really good exchange of ideas and very civil, even though we aren't all necessarily seeing things the same way. So that is much appreciated.
Thanks to all of you for the work that you're doing. I know that it's been a tough summer and you haven't really had any time off. And sometimes it feels like you're getting beaten up more than you are getting boosted up. So thank you for everything. I, I know that we all really appreciate the work that you're doing and have great confidence in all of you.
Thanks. The team has been outstanding. School committee should know that. I think they do. But it's, it's probably worth me saying publicly that the entire leadership team has been at the ready all summer long, working tirelessly to try to put a program together that we can be proud of. And as Julie said, the teachers have been right there with them, giving a lot of what would typically be their free time or their family time to get ahead of the curve, learn as much as they can and be prepared to, to bring the A game this fall. It won't be perfect, but it will be our perfect effort. And we're just, we'll, we'll try every day to be better than the day before and to do the best we can by the kids. I so wish we were planning everybody back on campus next week under the old model with all of the fun that goes along with the beginning of the year and the fall sports season. But this is the hand we're dealt and we are going to make the best of it that we can.
Yeah. Is, are we, are we ending with wrapping it up with school committee comment now?
You are.
Okay. I have a comment. I just want everybody to know, I feel like there was a lot of chatter out there this weekend. We all want our children to be back in school. I don't want my high schooler to be spending his year in the basement on his computer. We, we don't want our children to be in front of a screen all day. We know this is really hard and we're doing our best. We are, we are just all really working to get these kids back, but in a way that is safe and productive and makes sense for the whole district. So we really appreciate all the support that we get from people. We really appreciate all the feedback. We want to make sure that it continues to be in a positive and working together manner. And yes, and we are all really hoping to get back to some kind of normal as soon as possible. Anyone else?
Motion to adjourn.
But can I just say one thing before we do? Sarah, I just want to follow up on what you're saying.
Yeah.
And I think the solution is not perfect and it's not going to be perfect for everyone. The solution might work for some people and it might not work for others. So I just ask for people to be patient as we try to figure this out. I know we've talked about trying to phase things in that should probably happen very deliberately and, you know, very methodically. But we just ask for everyone's patience. You know, we're all parents too. We're all trying to get there as well and, and we will. But, you know, again, thank you for the support and, and the patience as well. So.
Yes, thank you. Anyone else? Comments? I think we're actually not adjourning the meeting, but moving into executive session.
Oh, good.
Is that right? Nice mute, Annie. So I guess I had, we had, we need a motion to move into executive session.
Second, Cameron.
So Eric?
Yes.
Matt?
Yep.
Teresa?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
I'm a yes. That's everybody. Wolf, yes.
So are we doing this on this, this call, or are we moving to a different call?
Pam, what's the plan? No, we lost our leader.
She already left us.
I think we, I think we're moving to a different call.
Sorry.
We can set that up.
Annie can't mute, and I can't unmute. I'm going to send you a link in about 30 seconds.
Okay, very good. Thank you so much. And thank you to everybody who attended our virtual meeting tonight.